I've started the recording at 6:30. Do we have a close to a quorum?
No.
Two more.
Hey, guys.
Hey, Mr. Joel Tucker Todd. How are you doing this evening?
Good, lady. How are you doing tonight?
Good. Hang it in there. There's Mr. Jared Bell and Mr. Will. We have a quorum.
Kimberly, it looks like Valerie is in this chat. She has a hand raised.
Oh, okay, we have to. There we go. Did it work?
Yeah.
Okay, she should have joined us. Two, three, four, five. We actually have a quorum. Hi Valerie, how you doing?
I'm well, how are you?
Good.
Good.
Commissioner Tucker.
Mm-hmm, he was. It looks like he's.
I'm here.
On mute.
Hey Joel, when I send you emails for stuff, they keep bouncing back.
You know, we have had that problem. I'm gonna give you all a different email address. I sent it.
Thank you.
To Kimberly.
That seemed like the same one. It wasn't different.
It's Gmail as opposed to the ancient AOL.com.
Oh, okay. See, I didn't catch that wonderful detail you said. Okay.
Doesn't everybody have AOL?
No.
I still have my.
Everybody doesn't.
You don't know, no AOL.
That's a, that's a no, Mr. Joel.
So I'm old.
Okay, so it's Gmail. Let me put that down now.
So the rest of it is still the same. It just changes from AOL to Gmail.
Yeah, I did that because of, yeah, it's the same thing, but Gmail.
Gotcha.
Okay, so I may not have, I didn't catch that, so I need to.
But I've got it. I've got it, Kimberly. Thank you. I've got what I needed from you.
Okay, thank you.
I did speak for our chairman. He is going to be calling in.
Okay. Do you want to get started in the interim until he gets? Are you gonna wait?
Oh, I would like to wait like three or four more minutes.
Okay. Ms. Ross, do we need to have some sort of introduction about where we left off and?
Yes.
Okay. All right. I see that Mr. Chairman Atkins has locked on.
Give me just one second, please. Okay. Moment. All right. Okay. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I'm Sean Atkins, Chair of the East Point Planning and Zoning Commission. At this time, I'd like to call to order our special call meeting. Today is December 3rd, 2020. Staff, would you please sound roll call to establish a quorum?
Commissioner Atkins.
Present.
Commissioner Miller.
Here.
Commissioner Tucker.
Here.
Commissioner Bell.
I am here.
Commissioner Finn.
He's on mute.
Here, 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 here.
Yeah, thanks, Mr. Finn. Commissioner McKnight.
Here.
Commissioner Lovett.
Here.
Commissioner Bryant.
Here.
Commissioner Fields. Mr. Chair, you have a quorum.
All right, thank you so very much. Okay, if you would, please, ladies and gentlemen, join me in a moment of silence. All right, thank you. Commissioners, at this time, I will entertain a motion to adopt the agenda for our special call meeting.
Motion to adopt.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved by Commissioner Miller, second by Commissioner Lovett, that we adopt our agenda as presented tonight. All in favor, sound aye.
Aye.
All opposed, sound nay. Hearing none, the ayes have it. Our agenda is adopted. Commissioners, I would also at this time entertain a motion to approve our November 19th, 2020 meeting minutes.
So move.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved by Commissioner Tucker Todd, second by Commissioner Lovett, that we approve our November 19th, 2020 meeting minutes. All in favor, sound aye.
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 All opposed, sound nay. Hearing none, the ayes have it. Our November 19th, 2020 meeting minutes are approved. Staff, do we have any presentations for this evening?
We do not have any presentations.
Okay, thank you. And as it relates to the agenda, all of our business would be under new business. Is that correct? As we have not heard the cases that we will act upon tonight.
Correct, all new business.
Okay, thank you. Commissioners, as you all are aware, we're having a special call meeting this evening as we were not able to complete our agenda for our regularly scheduled November meeting. We lost a quorum. My notes tell me that we should start on number nine on this agenda. We just case the 2020 M-009-10. Staff, please correct me if I'm not stating that correctly.
That is correct, sir. We have agenda number, item number nine is, which is 2020 M-009-10.
Okay, it looks like we've got six pieces of legislation to go through this evening. I am hoping that we will be able to maintain a quorum. And so as such, I'm just asking that if we could make all of our comments as succinct as possible, of course, I would like for everyone to have the opportunity to voice themselves as the opportunities or the time that's appropriate. But if we could be as succinct as possible so that we can get through all of our agenda items this evening, and if there's something that has already been said, if we can allow the record to stand with what has been said, then I would greatly appreciate that. Will the record also reflect that Commissioner Fields has joined us for the meeting?
Yes.
Hello, Mr. Field.
Hello, Commissioner Fields.
Hello, how are, how's everybody?
Good, thank you.
Doing well, thank you. I was just sort of going over our agenda and just asking everyone if we could please make our comments as succinct as possible this evening as something has already been said. Let the record stand as it will reflect in the record, just so that we may be able to get through all of our agenda items and not lose a quorum. Having said that, I believe that this particular agenda item does require a public hearing. And all of these cases, these are new cases. We've not heard these before, correct, staff?
That is correct. Kimberly, you muted.
Yeah, she's muted. Thank you. And I don't think that I have before me the rules for public hearing.
They should have been emailed. They should be.
Didn't need me to send them again.
Just one second, Tony. I'm gonna go through. Yes, if you would, please. Okay, you know what, Tony? I have them. It was under the heading Agenda.
Yeah, I just saw that.
That's why, okay, yes, but I do have them. Okay, thank you very much. Okay. Okay, for those attending these Zoom meetings, are reminded that these are public meetings with established rules of decorum and procedure, which will still be followed to the extent reasonably possible. The meetings are held to address zoning business of the city, and to that end, anyone participating in the virtual meeting will be expected to follow the rules for the public speaking, for public speaking at these meetings. Those in attendance have either accessed the meeting via telephone or webinar link unless you are an applicant or representative of the applicant actively addressing the question. I ask that you mute your microphone. Unless you signed up to make public comment on a particular agenda item prior to calling this meeting as set forth in the public notice, you will only be allowed to listen to the meeting. You will not be allowed to speak. The standard rules of procedure require a person who wishes to address the commission during the meeting to fill out a card providing his or her name and his or her address and to identify the item he or she wishes to speak on. Since no persons will be physically present, applicants or the applicant's representative wishing to address the commission have already signed up and identified themselves, they will be called upon by the chair or member of staff based upon this sign up. Some members of the public may have emailed comments to the planning and zoning email address prior to the calling of this meeting, and those emailed comments will be noted and read for the record when a particular agenda item is called after the applicant's presentation to the commission has been completed. Additionally, some members of the public may have left a message with the planning and zoning department prior to the calling of this meeting requesting an opportunity to comment on a particular agenda item over the phone during the meeting. Those individuals will be called by staff immediately prior to the calling of the agenda item in which they have expressed an interest and given an opportunity to listen to proceedings on the item and to address the commission at the appropriate time. Persons both favoring and opposing the proposed case will be provided an opportunity to address the commission. The applicant or the zoning, the applicant for the zoning case or the applicant's designated representative, if any, will be entitled to speak for a total of 15 minutes. Those who oppose the proposed zoning case will then be permitted to speak for a total of 15 minutes. However, understanding that this is a new platform and may take a little longer logistically, we will be relatively liberal with the time until we get used to this format. By majority vote, the commission may increase the total time of speakers provided that each side is given the same amount of time. The zoning applicant may reserve a portion of his or her allotted time for rebuttal. After the allotted time expires, the microphone of the speaker will be muted by the host. After speakers for and against an agenda item have had a full opportunity under these rules to address the commission, the public hearing will be closed. The commission shall discuss the case amongst its members. Members of the public are not permitted to speak during the commission's deliberation. When not speaking, please mute your microphone to avoid background noise that can be disturbing to the meeting. If you fail to do this, the host will give a report you. Also, should any recognized speaker desire for the commission to view a document at any time, please request that the host find and share the document. Due to security concerns, no one other than the host will be permitted to share the meeting screen. Speakers must adhere to the rules of the quorum. Each speaker shall speak only upon being recognized by the chair and only to the mayor's proposed zoning ordinance under consideration. Show, address remarks only to the commission, shall refrain from making personal attacks on any other speaker. The chair may refuse to speak or the right to continue if after first been cautioned the speaker continues to violate the rules of the quorum or the violated be removed from the Zoom meeting upon the request of the chair. Please understand the staff will be multitasking a lot during the meeting and may not be able to respond to a chat inquiry immediately or at all, or whether you should be, you should hear a technical diff. However, should you experience technical difficulties during the meeting, please feel free to use the chat feature on this different screen and stop. Thank you for your patience and understanding as we work with the challenging times and this new technology. Those are the rules for our public hearings. Commissioners, at this time, entertain a motion to open the public hearing for the first agenda item and that item is 2020 M-009-10.
Motion to open the public hearing.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved by Commissioner Miller, second by Commissioner Lovett, that we open the public. All in favor, sound aye.
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 All opposed, sound nay. Hearing none, the ayes have it. The public hearing is now open. Staff, would you please sound this agenda item?
Yes. Case number 2020, item number nine, case number 2020 M-009-10. City of East Point, citywide, the applicant seeks to amend Chapter 2, Zoning Regulations, Article D, Administrative Permits and Use Permits in order to provide for standards for approval of use permits for certain industrial uses within the I-1 Light Industrial District. Light Industrial Zoning District. It is a text amendment.
Okay. That is the caption for this agenda item, and the city is the applicant as this is a text amendment. So staff, would you please present your case?
Yes. Chairman.
Yes.
This case number is in succinct with the next item number, and I would like to ask for some guidance on how we should move forward on them and if it is possible to sound them together, because this is under Article D, under all use permits for the city. Ms. Ross, would it be appropriate for us to hear these cases together? Because we would be repeating ourselves once we get to 2020 M-010-10.
I think they should be heard separately since they're two separate agenda items and case numbers. I mean, I agree, they are related, but I think for purposes of the record, we should keep them separate.
Okay. Well, I will move forward. I'm going to move to share my screen and then we'll move forward from there. Okay, in reference to text amendment, Chapter 2, Article D, Use Permits, Case Number 2020 M-009-10, it is amendment to require use permits for the following uses in the I-1 zoning district. The first use permit is for dry cleaning plants, fuel and ice dealer manufacturers and wholesalers, food processing plants not to include slaughterhouses, gas station mini-marts, light assembly and fabrication, manufacturing, including wholesaling, repairing, compounding, assembly processing, preparing, preparation, packaging, packaging of treatment articles, food, smoke curing and canning, components, products, clothing, machines and application appliances and the like, where character of operations, emissions and byproducts do not create adverse effects beyond the boundaries of the property, research and experimental testing laboratories, including medical and dental laboratories, warehouse storage, wholesale trade and distribution establishments, warehousing facilities, including offices and truck terminals. Those are the proposed uses for use permits, and staff does, I'll hold there.
Thank you. Okay. Are there any other proponents here to speak in favor of this text amendment? Any other proponents here to speak in favor? Are there any opponents here to speak against the text amendment? Any opponents here to speak against? Hearing none, as seen, Commissioners, at this time, entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
We had a, someone call in, Ms. Carrie Ziegler. She called in this afternoon and she would like to speak, and she is on attendance as an attendee. May I allow her to speak, please?
Yes, absolutely. She is a proponent, is that correct, or an opponent?
She said that she was in support of, so that would be proponent.
Well, I, I'm sorry, I was in support of extending the moratorium, so I assume that would be against the text amendment. Either way, I, I didn't realize it was gonna be that specific as far as I-1, I-2, etc. I just had something general to say. I think that what I, that what I have to say is more geared towards the I-2 text amendment. I don't, I don't know how to proceed.
Well, we're not on that item yet, so.
Okay.
Correct. Okay. So are there any other proponents here to speak? Staff, do you have a list of any proponents here to speak in favor of the I-1 text amendment?
We received an email from Ms. Julie Aaron, and she is on the line as an attendee, and it was sent out to the commissioners.
Okay, and Ms. Aaron desires to speak, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay, is she a proponent or an opponent?
Ms. Smith, I wanted my written comments just to stand on their own if they can.
Okay.
I believe you mentioned they were given to all the commission members.
They were.
Okay, if there are any questions about what I submitted, I'm happy to answer those, but understand we can either speak or we can provide written comments, so I've provided written comments.
Yes, okay, thank you.
Ms. Ms. Erin has, please don't meet her quite yet. Ms. Erin has asked that her written comments be entered into the record, and they have also been sent to all the commissioners, so you will have a record of those for our purposes and to perfect the record. Ms. Erin, would you please state your first and last name and your current address?
Sure, and I included that in my written comments as well. First name is Julie, last name is Earring. My address is 2548 Jefferson Terrace, East Point, 30344.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Earring. All right, she may be muted. So we will enter her comments into the record. Are there any other speakers for this zoning matter?
We received, we received none.
Okay, any opponents that are in attendance? Hearing none, as seen, Commissioners, at this time, I entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
Move.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second.
Been moved by Commissioner Tucker Todd, second by Commissioner Miller, that we close the public hearing for case number 2020 M-009-10. All in favor, sound aye.
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 All opposed, sound nay. Hearing none, the ayes have it. The public hearing is now closed. Staff, would you please sound your recommendation?
Yes. In reference to case number 2020 M-009-10, City of East Point, text amendment, Chapter 2, Article D, Use Permits, Case Number 2020 M-009-10, staff recommends approval of a text amendment to amend the Chapter 2, Zoning Regulations, Article D, Administrative Use Per, Administrative Use and Use Permits in order to provide for standards of approval of use permits for certain industrial uses in the I-1 Industrial District.
Okay. Commissioners, you've heard from the applicant, which is the City of East Point. Staff has presented the case, and you've heard staff's recommendation at this time of entertain a motion. Let us not all speak at once.
I am going to make a motion for approval for discussion. I do have caution, caution, I do have to ask.
Sure. Commissioner Fan has made a motion to recommend approval or discussion. Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved by Commissioner Fan, second by Commissioner Tucker. Any comments, questions or concerns?
My question is, if I can have you, Kim, to just go back in terms of those different usage, and it's my understanding that these, these will only be, the permits will only be provided by staff to allow for these different uses. There's no other requirement that they have to go through. You guys or staff will automatically approve them if they meet these, if they meet these particular criterias.
That process that you're speaking of is called an administrative approval process.
Right.
These permits would be use permits. These permits would actually have to come back through this body, the planning commission for recommendation, if they meet the criterias that are placed on them, and then staff would write a staff analysis based on them meeting the criterias that will be required, and then it would go on to the mayor and council for a final decision.
Okay, that's, that's, I just want a clarification for those who may be listening, and then also for some that may not even be aware of what this is actually going to allow for. So thank you so much for the clarification.
Yes, sir.
Okay, any other comments, questions, concerns? Kim, I have a question.
Yes.
So I see here that we are requiring, or we will, we're going to require, I thought I saw office.
It was wholesale trade and distribution establishment and warehouses, including the offices associated with those uses.
Okay. And under bullet three?
Food processing plants, yes.
Right. So we would allow for a food processing plant to operate with a use permit, but am I reading this correct in that a slaughterhouse would not have to go through a use permit process?
Food processing plant not to include slaughterhouses, meaning a slaughterhouse is, is not considered a food processing plant, so it's excluding that use just in general.
Okay, I'm clear on that now. All right. And what are packaging of treatment articles? What is that?
That would be a process in the manufacturing process. I don't have any specific examples. Packaging of treatment articles, I'm assuming that that is a part of manufacturing that deals just with, with preparation and treatment in the process of manufacturing products.
Okay, is there anybody else on staff that might have, who might know for sure?
Oh, trigger articles could be like different chemicals that are used for certain clothing. When clothing is first, I don't know if the word is manufactured, fabricated, different chemicals, it's basically the packaging of chemicals. So different things, like wood is treated, there's certain things done to treat materials, certain things done to treat certain fabrics. So that's what the packaging of treatment articles is.
Okay, all right, thank you. All right, those are all my questions. Are there any other comments, questions or concerns?
I have a question.
Yes, Commissioner Bryant?
The gas station mini-mart. I'm concerned about that. Gas station mini-mart.
That's, that's bullet point number, uh, one, two, three, four, the fourth one.
That's number four, I believe.
Yes, sir. What is your concern?
Well, my concern is I know we have a lot of gas stations already in East Point, and I'm, I'm just concerned about the gas stations. The mini-marts. I have a concern about that.
Yes, sir. Gas stations are currently a permitted use in the I one zoning district. Under this proposed text amendment, it would have to go through a use permit process, which it would have to come through this board um, for their recommendation to mayor and council for final approval.
Okay. Any other comments, questions or concerns? Hearing on the CNN. I'm sorry.
I'd like to find out, are we just trying to control chemical uses in certain areas? Because it sounds like most of this stuff applies to chemicals.
Uh, Commissioner Phil, we, the, the intent is to take a broader look, a, a second look, a deeper dive into land uses that could potentially have negative impacts on the surrounding community. And, um, in the past, that has not, um, been looked at or it has not been reviewed in such, such a, such a a deeper dive and, and just making sure that when these type of land uses come to the city, um, they've been permitted outright by law. You can, if you want to do these things, you could just go ahead and do them. Um, the intent of this ordinance is to have this body take a, a deeper look at exactly what type of uses that could have potential impact on the community. Um, just given a deeper dive at what they're doing, what type of chemicals are coming in, what type of products are going out, anything that could affect the air, the water, and just basically the quality of life of the community. We're having those particular type of uses, take a deeper dive, um, and purview from this board as well as the community and provide for opportunity for the community to sound their, their input of what they think that the, the impact would be on them. We're giving a, and a voice to the community in, in a way.
Okay, I understand that. So actually, so Ms. Ziegler should be, you know, um, her concerns should be alleviated by this particular type of action or if we tend to. Am I right? Because we're going to be looking closely at those things which pollute, those things which, uh, affect the, uh, quality of the air and what have you. So I would, uh, think that this would address Ms. Ziegler's, uh, comments and concerns.
Right, but we have, we would have to give her the opportunity to say that, Commissioner Fields.
Yeah. Thank you, I'm, I'm finished.
Thank you. Okay, uh, any other comments, questions or concerns? Hearing on the CNN, there's a motion made by Commissioner Fan, seconded by Commissioner Tucker, that this body recommends approval. All in favor, sound aye. I'm sorry, all in favor, sound aye? All opposed, so no, nay? Hearing on the CNN, the eyes have it, the body recommends approval. So would you please sound our next agenda item, twenty twenty M is a mirror dash zero one zero dash one zero?
Thank you, Chairman. Item number ten, twenty twenty M dash zero ten, dash ten, city of East Point, citywide. The applicant seeks an amendment to chapter two zoning regulations, article D, administrative use permits in order to provide for standards for approval, use permits for certain industrial uses with I two heavy industrial district, zoning district. It is a text amendment.
Okay, thank you. Commissioners, at this time, I entertain a motion to open the public hearing for two zero two zero, Emerson Mary does zero one zero dash one zero.
The mood.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved by Commissioner Tucker Todd, second by Commissioner Bill, that we open the public hearing for this agenda item. All in favor, sound aye?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed, sound nay. Hearing none, the eyes have it, the public hearing is now open. Staff, would you please, uh, present your case?
Yes, I will share my screen again. Again, this is, um, a text amendment for chapter two, article D, use permits, case number twenty twenty M dash zero one zero dash one zero. Amendment to allow for the following uses to be use permits. Um, this is a little bit repetitive. Um, dry cleaning plants, fuel and ice dealer, manufacturer and wholesalers, food processing plants not to include slaughterhouses, gas station and mini-marts, light, assembly and fabrication, no activity which provides, which produces liquid alleviant odor fumes or dust which can be detected beyond wall of the building is permitted. Manufacturing, including wholesaling, repair, compounding, assembling, processing, preparation, packaging of treatment articles, food, smoking, curing, canning, components, products, clothing, machines and appliances and the like, where character of operations, emissions and byproducts do not create adverse effect effects beyond the boundaries of the property. Research and experimental testing facilities, including medical and dental laboratories, warehousing and storage, wholesale, trade, distribution establishment and warehousing facilities, including the offices and truck terminals. Those will all be use permits under the article D, chapter two.
Are there any other proponents here to speak in favor of this text amendment? Any other proponents here to speak in favor? Are there any opponents here to speak against? This is where I believe that, um, Ms. Ziegler wanted to speak.
Yes, I will unmute her now. Ms. Ziegler should be able to speak now.
Good evening, everybody. Um, my name is Carrie Ziegler. I live at nine four seven Parkside Terrace. Um, first I'd like to say that the agenda wasn't available. I signed up for public comments, so I'll be speaking mostly about I two here. Um, but may lightly talk about other issues. Um, first, the, the document that is online for.
Before you go further, Ms. Ziegler, before you go further, um, just for clarification, a part of the public hearing rules is that you're only able to speak on the zoning matter at hand. You can come back and speak to other issues, but for this instance, at this moment, we will only hear your comments regarding the I two heavy industrial, okay?
Okay.
Great, you make a, proceed.
Um, so the document that's online regarding I two is different than what's on the screen here. Um, online it talks about, um, that it, it's also permitting the manufacturing of acetylene gas, acid, asphalt, bleaching powder, brick, cement, chlorine gas, coal tar, there's, there's a whole list of things. Um, so I, I'm not really sure why there's a difference in, in what's online and what's on the screen. Um, but, um, so wh- what I find to be concerning is that we're still tailoring with the idea that heavy industries are, um, going to make their home here. Um, and when I look at the I two text amendment, there isn't really anything that calls for like a certain buffer between residents. Um, additionally, I would like to talk about a particular chemical that, um, that we found. Um, it, when we did our air samples during a study that we partnered with Emory University with. Um, we found that one of these chemicals that is in the air that we breathe is something called two hexanone. Uh, and when you look up this chemical on the NIH's website, which is a government, federal government website, it says, and I quote, "It was used in the past in paint and paint thinner to make other chemical substances and to dissolve oils and waxes." It is no longer made or used in the United States because it has harmful health, harmful health effects. Um, it is formed as a waste product resulting from industrial activities such as, such as making wood pulp and producing gas from coal and in shale operations. Um, although we did pick, um, and we did pick this chemical up when people could smell, um, a particular odor. Additionally, I understand that particularly because of COVID, the city is concerned about the revenue flow with property taxes. But, um, we cannot always count on companies paying their taxes. For example, Meredith Company is behind um, by over a hundred and sixty-one thousand dollars, and this has been an accumulation of many years. Um, so this isn't because of COVID that they aren't able to pay. Therefore, the pressures on residents to pay their taxes. And when we have a vulnerable population that we're trying to protect, sometimes inviting companies into our city isn't always the best. Um, and the best way to protect ourselves is to use our zoning to not allow companies who are going to be bad corporate citizens. Um, and I just hope that all of us continue looking out for the health, safety and welfare of, of East Point residents.
Thank you, Ms. Ziegler. Are there any other opponents here to speak against this zoning case? Any other opponents here to speak against the zoning case? Hearing on the CNN, commissioners, at this time, I entertain a motion to close the public hearing for two zero two zero, Emerson Mary does zero one zero dash one zero.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved by Commissioner Tucker Todd, seconded by Commissioner Fields, that we close the public hearing. All in favor, sound aye?
Aye.
All opposed, sound nay? Hearing none, the eyes have it, the public hearing is now closed. Staff, would you please sound your recommendation?
Here in reference to item number ten, item, uh, item twenty twenty M dash one zero. Excuse me, twenty twenty M zero dash one zero dash ten, city East Point, citywide, applicant seeks to amend chapter two zoning regulations, article D, administrative permits and use permits in order to provide standards for approval, use permits for certain industrial uses with I two heavy industrial district. Staff has recommended approval of this text amendment.
Thank you. Commissioners, you've heard from the applicant, which is the city of East Point, staff has presented the text amendment. And, um, at this, you've heard staff's recommendation at this time of entertaining motion.
I'll make a motion, we accept or we approve the, uh, recommendation.
Okay, so Commissioner Fields is making a motion. He's recommending approval of the text amendment. Is that correct, Commissioner Fields?
That's correct.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Okay, that motion has been seconded by Commissioner Tucker Todd. Any comments, questions or concerns? Um, Kim, I'm going to go back and I'm going to ask, I hope you guys have it, um, handy. Uh, Ms. Ziegler brought up a few good points, and so the list, if you could go back to the list that will require especially use permit, please. Does staff also have a list of those uses that would be permissible without a use permit? In the I two zoning district?
We should, but it would be in our text amendment. Tony, are you able to pull up the text amendment, the actual text amendment? For permitted uses?
Yeah, I have the one from the room twenty, if you can let me share my screen.
I will. My computer would not be frozen. Okay, here we go, second. You should be able to share your screen.
So these are the permitted uses that are currently within the I two zoning district?
It goes to number nine? It's one through nine, is that correct?
That's correct. And I believe that's in the presentation at, um, some point.
Okay, there were some chemicals that were referenced by Ms. Ziegler in her comments. Could you, uh, point those out to me?
So that would be the, if I'm understanding, the manufacturing, uh, number fifteen, that list of chemicals which would end up coming through, I believe, for a use permit.
Which would, say that once again, please?
Come through for a use permit.
Okay, so that would be covered in what is a part of the text amendment to come before the body for a special use permit?
Correct.
Okay.
And, and here, reading that, Tony, it looks like it's, uh, something I'm saying three hundred feet from residential. Is that the buffer?
That's for the dry cleaning plants, uh, but this list of number fifteen, um, for the sake of the presentation doesn't have the list, but it is covered under manufacturing. So it's just somebody coming for a use permit with one of these being the permitted uses. It would be come before you all, um, for the recommendation, as Director Smith stated, for council to approve, deny, you know, whatever conditions you may or may not have.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Great. Yes, Commissioner Phil?
Do understand that, that these are the uses that are not, you know, you don't have to have a permit for, you can just go and start building over there, working.
Um, these are the uses again that will come through this body for review as a, in order to make a recommendation to council. So no, these are not outright uses, these are under the use permit.
Okay, thank you.
Any other comments, questions or concerns? Hearing on, um, commissioners, there is.
Excuse me, Bones Chair. I think this is what she was looking at at first, because I see asphalt in here and some of the other thing that she mentioned in her presentation. Because that was then, uh, those are, the standards was already there. We looking at those other things that's being added, is that right, Kim?
We're looking at, um, manufacturing and wholesale, but to speak on manufacturing. Manufacturing was removed from the permitted use, um, category and moved into the use permit category where there would be an additional, um, requirement of review by this board as well as, um, mayor and council.
So when you say manufacturing, like you said, a manufacturing of.
Of A through Q of what you see on the list.
Right, so that would still have to come through, um.
A use permit, that's correct.
Okay, okay.
Correct, and the community will have the opportunity to provide comments as well.
Okay, all right, thanks.
Okay, thank you. All right, any other comments, questions or concerns? There's a motion on the floor to recommend approval made by Commissioner Fields, seconded by Commissioner Fan. Is that correct, correct?
It's actually, uh, me, Mr. Chair.
Tucker Todd, okay, so the motion on the floor is to recommend approval made by Commissioner Field, seconded by Commissioner Tucker Todd, all in favor, sound aye?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed, sound nay. Hearing none, the eyes have it, the motion carries. Our next agenda item is case number two zero two zero, Emerson Mary does zero one one dash one zero. Staff, would you please sound this agenda item?
Yes, Chairman, item number eleven on our agenda, twenty twenty M dash zero one one dash one zero. City East Point, citywide, the applicant seeks to amend the city East Point zoning map in order to add the new zoning districts, MXCI, mixed-use commercial industrial district, and WHI, warehouse industrial district. Uh, it is a formative text amendment.
Thank you. Commissioners, at this time, I entertain a motion to open the public hearing for this agenda item.
Motion, open the public hearing, please.
Is there a second? It's been moved by Commissioner Miller, seconded by Commissioner Field, so we open the public hearing for two zero two zero, Emerson Mary does zero one one dash one zero. All in favor, sound aye?
Aye.
All opposed, sound nay. Hearing none, the eyes have it, the public hearing is now open. Staff, would you please present the case?
Yes, Chairman, I will, um, share my screen. One moment, please. Um, this text amendment is associated with, um, all of the text amendments and it is for, um, MX CI, the mixed-use commercial industrial, as well as the WHI, new warehousing, um, zoning districts to be added to the legends of our zoning map. We at this time are not proposing that any specific land uses or parcels be approved with these designations, but just to add it to our zoning map as potential zoning districts to be rezoned in the future. And if, um, an applicant would wish to do so. So no action to our, to change our zoning map at this time, only to add them as options and permitted uses in our zoning map.
Any other proponents here to speak in favor of this text amendment? Any other opponents to speak in favor? Are there any opponents to speak against? Any opponents to speak against this text amendment? Hearing on the CNN, Commissioners, at this time I entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
The move by Commissioner Tucker Todd, seconded by Commissioner Miller, that we close the public hearing, all in favor sound aye?
Aye. Aye.
All opposed sound nay. Hearing none, the eyes have it, the public hearing is now closed, staff, would you please sound your recommendation?
Yes, Chairman, in reference to item number eleven, text amendment, zoning map case number twenty twenty M dash zero one one dash one zero. Staff recommends approval for the text amendment to amend City East Point zoning map in order to add the new zoning districts MXI, MXCI, mixed-use commercial industrial and WHI warehouse industrial zoning districts under text amendment.
Thank you. Commissioners, you've heard the presentation from the applicant. You've heard the applicant's presentation, which is the city of East Point, you've also heard staff's recommendation. At this time I entertain a motion.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion to recommend approval.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Has been moved by Commissioner Tucker Todd, seconded by Commissioner Miller, that this body recommends approval. Any comments, questions or concerns? Kim, I have a question.
Sir?
Yes, for me it would be helpful, so when we create these new zoning districts, the MXCI, the mixed-use commercial industrial, is there a list of uses that would fall under that category that would be helpful for me? And the same would apply to the WHI, the warehouse industrial. Has staff already compiled a list of uses that would fall into those categories?
Yes, and those lists were described in item number six on our agenda, as well as item number five, but we do have that information for you, and I can provide that. One moment, please.
Okay.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, Commissioner Fan.
You yield for me, my camera looking at that. When we met last, when we met just last time, we talked about these particular zonings, and there were certain things that were allowed in those zones, and when we sent it back to defer for further discussion, some of it we passed. I mean, I know I got off because my mic went out, but I want to just make sure that we're talking about apples and apples and not apples and oranges. I'm just trying to get some better understanding, because I stepped off, because again, you know, my mic went off, the only thing I can do is give you a thumbs up, I can't even do that tonight. But I appreciate it, i- if someone can help me to understand the difference between, Kim, and what we did last week with the WH one and the, the what is it, M, you know what I'm talking about.
MXCI and the WHI.
Yeah, yeah, help me to understand.
Tony, or do you have the ability to pull the, the presentation up? I'm having technical difficulties, and for some reason, I'm not able to move my mouse around on here to select.
If, if I'm in error, just tell me, you know, Commissioner, you're in error, because I, I thought we talked about what those uses was.
So, um, I have this evening's presentation, some of the slides are hidden because they weren't used for this evening. But on the screen currently are the proposed uses for the MXCI, which would be the mixed-use commercial industrial, and they are listed on the screen. All permitted use within C one, C two, CL, CR, which would be, and then the commercial districts, and then the MX districts, the nightclub with use permit only. So as with the other ones, we will have to come through the body for review and recommendations to council. Any proposal for a project of a nightclub will also have to come through you all for recommendations. Art galleries, artisan workshops, animal care facilities, assembly of electronic equipment, banks, bookstores, brew pubs, clubs and lodges, community center buildings, education, education facilities for colleges and universities, dry cleaning stations, movie theaters, hotels with the motels prohibited, museums, gyms and exercise facilities, grocery stores, collaborative workspaces, community kitchens, residential uses for single-family or two-family dwellings, as well as multifamily. Rooftop gardens, newspaper publishing facilities, office, business and professional, radio and television broadcasting stations, research and experimental testing labs, restaurants on, and such like establishments, studios, tasting rooms, training facilities, retail establishments, as well as cigars and smoke shop establishments.
Okay, thank you.
Only we know you put the cigar.
I love my smoke shop, you know, Cuban, that's our thing.
Then could you go to the, the WHI, please?
Absolutely. And then for our WHI, proposed warehouse industrial permitted uses, commercial greenhouse, supply nursery, education facilities for technical and vocational schools, manufacturing, newspaper publishing facilities, wholesale trade and distribution establishments, office for business and professional, paint and glass and wallpaper stores, printing, publishing and reproducing establishments, research and experimental labs, restaurants and like establishments, self-storage mini warehouse facilities, food truck stations, self-storage and mini warehouse, that's on there twice, food truck stations, gas station mini-marts, warehousing and storage, warehouse and distribution center, research and development establishments, repair services and trade shops, tractor and trailer storage, data centers, gyms and fitness centers, similar in storage, distribution uses, and any accessory building and use that is customarily incidental to any of the previously mentioned permitted uses.
Okay, so thank you for both of those, very helpful. So the question that I would have, so if we look at what's permitted in the WHI, I see that the, the mini, where is it, the gas station mini-mart? So if, if we're requiring the gas station mini-mart to have a special use permit under I one and I two, does it also apply in the WHI?
It does not apply in the WHI for the fact that we do not have any designated property zoned as WHI. So any applicants that come that want to have a gas station, they would have to go through a rezoning process, which would have to come before this body as well as mayor and council for approval.
Okay, so my only challenge with that is that if we are requiring special use permits for any of the uses that are listed in the WHI and the MXCI for I one and I two, but not require use permits for these designations, I hear you when you say that we don't yet have this, these designations as a part of our zoning map, but why wouldn't we include special use permits for those things? So five years down the road, we have a designation for this. Then we have to go back and amend that, so why wouldn't we do all of that in one fell swoop?
So the intent, and that's, that was one of the reasons I was asking in reference to use permits, because article D, it includes every single type of use permit for every zoning district, it's not blocked out by zoning district in that article. So I had a specific question, as when we talk about use permits, we should talk about them collectively, because they're all under that article D as a use permit. So, um, I mean, we could potentially put gas stations under use permits to make clarification, just for the fact that you're, you're saying that, and so that it's fair. But the fact that we don't have warehouse industrial districts on any parcel in the city, anyone wanting to do any of these things that are permitted here would have to come through a rezoning anyway. So I do see what you're saying on the back end. If somehow zonings came through, and then, you know, they wanted to change the use, they wouldn't have to go through the use permit process because it's a permitted use. So that's something that we didn't think about, and we might want to rethink that and add it to the use permit under warehousing, because it could potentially not have to have a use permit if it's already zoned that.
Okay, um, I would like Ms. Ross, because my thing is that if we're going to recommend approval, this body just recommended approval for use permits for things that are included here. So why wouldn't we add a clause here that simply would state that any of the uses identified, any of the uses permitted under the WHI and the MXCI zoning categories that are listed or having to have a special use permit should also follow the same process. Ms. Ross?
Can you, can you hear me?
I can now.
Okay, um, so some use permit requirements may be required in certain zoning districts and not required in others, as just how, that's just how it operates. So if staff wants gas station mini-marts to be a permitted use as of right in WHI, but if it's located in an industrial I one, I two zoning district, it has to go through the use permit process based on the type of zoning district it is. Staff has the, you know, that is allowable, but if it wants WHI to also require use permit for gas station mini-mart, then that can be moved, but certain zoning districts do allow certain uses as a permitted right because of the type of zoning district. And while in other zoning districts, it would have to go through the use permit process. So that would just be a call from staff to see how they want to regulate gas station mini-marts in the WHI zoning district.
Okay, so I, I get that, but if we are saying that for mini-marts, gas station mini-marts, and I think warehousing and storage, there are a few on here that we said would require a special use permit. And those were industrial districts, one and two, so I one and I two. And now we're talking about a warehouse industrial district, why wouldn't we require a special use permit in a warehouse industrial district? As well?
I mean, again, it would be up to staff to see how they want to regulate it, because there is no legal reason for one way or the other. So if staff, as a, from a planning standpoint, wants to allow for the use permit requirement for WHI, they can certainly do that. It's, it would be up to, to staff to see if it was, if it would be more appropriate as a permitted use or as a use permit requirement from a planning standpoint.
Okay, and in, in that entire process, where does the planning and zoning commission fall in if the commission thinks that it would be consistent across the board, outside of staff's recommendation?
Right, so if sta, if the commission, if it's the commission's desire or to recommend that the gas station mini-mart process be a use permit process in WHI, then that can be part of the recommendation in the motion tonight for, for, I guess what would need to happen is do a motion to reconsider, because you all have already heard the WHI case. And if you want to do a motion to reconsider, to amend the motion, to recommend that the gas station mini-mart be part of the use permit zoning text amendment, then that can be done, unless staff, you know, wants to go ahead and do it, you know, on its own, and we can make that, make that change before Monday night's meeting.
But would it need to be a reconsideration, because we're currently, we're just talking about the WHI and the MXCI? And so my question was really, is that would it be, to make things consistent, would it be, I guess, more logical to say that if there are any uses that are part of these zoning categories that require special use permit under I one and I two, that the same would apply under these classifications as well? I just don't understand why we would have a warehouse industrial district that would allow, and it's not just gas station, I just picked that up, but there are others in here as well. So it would require use permit, and I get it, that some zoning cat classifications require use permits and some don't, but it was industrial, and this is warehouse industrial. I'm just trying to see what is the big difference in I one and I two in a warehouse industrial, where we would just allow these in, in warehouse industrial, which is a new district, but we wouldn't allow them in an I one or I two without a use permit?
Can I ask a question?
Yes.
Is the concern more or less in regards to the review of that application for, let's say it's a mini-mart? Because like Director Smith said, you know, yes, it's a use permit in the industrial districts because they already exist, but we don't have any land, any properties that are currently zoned for warehouse industrial, because it doesn't exist, and we're not going to, at this time, rezonate properties. So anything that does come in for a gas station, for example, will still have to come where there's WHI or the industrial districts, will still have to come through this body for review, because we have to either go through a special use permit process or a rezoning, both of which come through both our bodies of planning commission and, and mayor and council.
Right, so I understand that, that, that those things, special use permits, rezonies and those things, will have to come before the body. My, my question or my challenge in that is that it's almost like looking at our standards, when we're looking at a variance. And I have an issue with some things that we, you know, we've, we've done here as a body, because I think that we have to apply certain standards, you know? So if, if we're talking about a rezoning, and they're coming before the body for a rezoning to, for a use, which is to, to allow for this use, the use is already allowed under the WHI, the WHI zoning district, but it doesn't necessarily say that you've got to have a special use permit to operate within that zoning classification.
Well, I, I will say that the WHI zoning district, the newly proposed warehouse district, the intent is to get the community buy-in on the front end, or not buy-in, but at least provide for them to have a voice on how these type of uses will impact their community. We also have provided for the different criteria points that they'll have to go through. They have a, a different set of development standards that they would have to go through in order to bring any of these new type of uses to the city. So we have architectural standards that they would have to abide by under the rezoning. We have development standards that they would have to apply for under the new zoning classification, as well as there are buffer requirements that they would have to abide by. And so all of those things would be looked at on the front end of any application or project that comes to the city of East Point under this new warehouse industrial district. So the difference between this warehouse proposed district and the existing I one and I two is that the I one and I two properties, they're already zoned, they already have those land uses there, they're in use. So the only thing that they would be able to do is expand, and if they did wish to expand in any type of way, they would have to go through a permit use process in order for us to have that extra level of review to see how their expansion would impact the city and the community. And in that process, they would have to come before your, this body, planning commission, as well as the council, as well as getting comments and concerns from the community, which is something that they don't have to do now.
Okay, so let me ask this question, and then we can move on. So I'll go back to the gas station mini-mart. So let's say that we've got an applicant that comes and they want to establish a gas station mini-mart within the WHI zoning district, okay? And let's say that that district is relatively close to some residential community. Over time, the community complains about the noise, the trash, the loitering, and all of those things, but we've already approved the use, okay? So eventually, the owner decides, I'm just gonna leave, I don't feel welcomed here. So then another gas station can come, right? Because you've already approved the use. And the other gas station that comes does not need a special use permit, because the use is permitted, correct? So then, so then, because the use has already been permitted, then the, the community just, if, if the same thing happens again, they just continue to suffer through the lights, the noise, the loitering. they just continue to suffer through the lights, the noise, the loitering, the, all of those things. Because it does not require a special use permit.
But what it would require is a rezoning, and in that rezoning process, it will, tho- those type of concerns and issues would be vetted in that process. And there is a, a, a string of guidelines that we have placed on gas station and mini-marts that they would have to abide by that, which does deal with lighting, noise, buffering, and um, all of those sort of things. So they wouldn't just get to come in and, and, and get to do what they want to do. But um, I do see your point for future, for the future, I do see that. And um, I, I tend to agree with you that specifically for gas stations, that it may need to be um, a, a use permit under the, the warehouse. And I'm tending to, to agree with you just for what could happen in the future.
Okay, I, I, I'm not trying to be difficult, I'm just trying to
See your point.
Is if we're gonna clean it up, I mean, if we're doing this and we're going through the exercise, then let's try to be comprehensive as we do it, is, is really my point. And um, so those things just struck me as odd um, that we would require them in a similar district of, of, of I one could potentially be similar to a W H I, but not in, in I one, although it does not yet exist. So I just think that if we're gonna do it, then my thing is just, we just be comprehensive about it and try to address those things to make it more efficient. So those are my thoughts. So commissioners, um, you've heard it. We've got on the floor, any more comments, questions or concerns? Okay.
I just wanna know, of course, I'm, based on what you just elaborated and talked about, is that something gonna be addressed now in terms of trying to work Smith it in such a way that is included in the special use? Uh, or are we gonna move forward with this language? Um, moving forward, going toward um, the council for approval uh, with this language in it? I'm, because you, you know, you spent a lot of time, a long time articulating that, John. So I just wanna make sure that once we leave here, that we leave here with some clarity. If, if it's gonna be moved to the special use, or is it gonna stay like it is, is it going to council as it is on um, the next meeting? That, that's, that's a question for staff.
For clarification, I, of, in reference to this item, uh, item number eleven, twenty twenty M dash eleven dash ten. This is specifically to add the W H I warehouse industrial and the M X I, M X C I, mixed-use commercial industrial to the zoning map. This is not speaking to item number five and item number six, which was acted upon um, last week on the nineteenth, which um, basically were both, those two items were both, one was approved, the M X C I was approved. Um, with the um, distinction to remove uh, drive-throughs. And the item number five, which is the warehouse industrial, that action, I, that item was actually deferred by this body. So it's gonna move um, to the council with the recommendation from planning commission to be deferred back to the planning commission. So um, as Ms. Ross had stated, if it is the board's um, will to go back and open those cases up and then amend your, your, the motions that you made on it, that you acted on it prior to, then you would have to do that via item number five and item number six. But this particular item number eleven is specifically to add the warehouse industrial district as well as the mixed-use commercial industrial districts to the zoning map.
Okay, so, so that makes sense. So now that we're discussing that, in my mind, I feel like eleven should have come before five and six. We should have created, because this is just creating the zoning districts, correct?
Yes, to the, to the um, correct.
Okay, so I feel like eleven should have come before five and six, we should have created the zoning districts first and then gone through the other piece. So, so this is not where we would insert language about the special use permit that would be inserted in
Item number
And the permitted under the um, well, this does talk about permitted uses. Um.
This information that you're seeing on the screen is actually for item number five on the agenda that was active on, on the nineteenth.
Okay, so this, so that is about permitted uses, okay.
Correct, correct.
Now we just wanna add the classifications, the zoning classifications.
Correct.
We will, um, so thank you Commissioner Fan. Um, so what it sounds like is that for this one, in my mind, these, this one should have come before the others, we should have added the classifications first. So we just wanna add the classifications, the M X C I and the W H I. And then these are uses that were part of previous legislation. And we voted to defer this, and so we can go back to reconsider to add something about use permits to this here that would then be covered.
Yes, sir.
Okay, so there's a motion on the floor to recommend approval, and this is just really to add these zoning classifications, M X C I and W H I. That motion was made by Commissioner Tucker, Todd?
Tucker Todd.
Seconded by Commissioner Miller?
That's correct.
That's correct.
Okay, great, all right. All in favor, sound aye?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed, sound nay. Hearing none, the ayes have it, the motion carries. All right, our next item is two zero two zero M is in Mary dash zero one two dash one zero. Staff, would you please sound this agenda item?
Yes, Chairman, in reference to item number twelve, twenty twenty M dash zero one two dash one zero. City of East Point, citywide, the applicant seeks to amend the city of East Point Comprehensive Plan Update twenty seventeen and future development map to allow for community goals and character areas to incorporate M X C I, mixed-use commercial industrial, and W H I warehouse industrial zoning districts, and in the applicable character areas typical zoning district. It is a form of a text amendment?
Thank you. Commissioners, at this point, and at this time, I entertain a motion to open a public hearing for this agenda item.
Mr. Chair.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved by Commissioner Bryant, seconded by Commissioner Miller, that we open the public hearing for two zero two zero M is in Mary dash zero one two dash one zero. All in favor, sound aye?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed, sound nay. Hearing none, the ayes have it, the public hearing is now open. Staff, would you please present your case?
Yes, sir. Tony, are you able to share your screen again for item number twelve, the C, twenty twenty M dash twelve dash ten, please?
Yes.
Can we look at the slides that actually outline where we would like to? Yes, so in reference to this item, this is um, in a request uh, to amend our current twenty seventeen comprehensive plan. And what we are proposing to do is to add the M X C I zoning district to the typical zoning districts that you would see in the town center, sub-area, downtown area. And we are proposing to add the M X C I, which is the mixed-use commercial industrial district to the sub-area one. Um, next slide, please. Sub-area two, which is also town center, the Lawrence Street area. We would like to add the M X C I mixed-use commercial district as a typical zoning district um, in this area as well, town center, sub-area two, Lawrence Street.
And just to add on that, that we also want to um, add commercial industrial to the use and scale.
Say that, please, a little louder, you tape it off at the end.
I'm sorry, that also the use and scale sections will be amended to include the commercial and industrial uses.
And we also would like to add a typical, the typical zoning district to the town center, sub-area three, Willingham Warehouse District. This district is one that we received a livable communities initiative grant from the A R C. And um, we would like to add that new proposed zoning district to this area as well, the where, mixed-use commercial industrial district. And there may be one additional district. Um, and the last area, well, two areas, is the industrial districts, sub-area one for legacy indus, industrial as well as sub-area two for industrial business park. We would like to add M X C I, mixed-use commercial industrial as a typical zoning within these areas. And those are the four sub-areas that we will, we're proposing, the new proposed zoning district, the M X C I.
Are those sub-areas?
Yes.
Are, are there any other proponents here to speak in favor of this zoning matter? Any other proponents here to speak in favor of this zoning matter? Are there any opponents here to speak against the zoning matter? Any opponents here to speak against the zoning matter? Hearing none, seeing none, Commissioners, at this time, I entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
No move.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved by Commissioner Field, seconded by Commissioner Brown, that we close the public hearing. All in favor, sound aye?
Aye.
All opposed, sound nay. Hearing none, the ayes have it, the public hearing is now closed. Staff, would you please sound your recommendation?
Yes, in reference to item twelve, twenty twenty M dash zero one two dash one zero. City of East Point, citywide, the applicant seeks to amend city of East Point Comprehensive Plan Update twenty seventeen and future development map to allow for community goals and character areas to incorporate M X C I, mixed-use industrial district. And um, any applicable character areas, typical zoning districts, we recommend approval.
Okay, Commissioners, you've heard from the applicant, which is the city of East Point, you've heard staff's recommendation for approval. At this time, I entertain a motion.
Mr. Chair, I'd like a motion to uh, recommend approval.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved by Commissioner Tucker Todd, seconded by Commissioner Love, that this body recommends approval. Any comments, questions or concerns?
I do, I, I want, I just wanna go back to Lawrence Street, if you would. You wanted to add it, I'm learning to see what those uses were that you wanted to put in that area.
The current uses are the current typical zoning districts is C R, mix, um, M I X, which is our mixed-use commercial business park, B P, I one, which is light industrial, E, excuse me, E I, M I, I, excuse me, O I T with glasses.
What is it about, Kim? What is M I?
It's the medical um, district, zoning district.
Okay, I thought so. Good on.
And office institutional, it's O I T and a C one, C L and C two.
The, on Lawrence Street, now we have an office park at the other end of Lawrence, and that was, we had dealt with a while back with them violating the buffer and what have you. I'm just trying to see, because it, Lawrence on the, on the end coming toward, I guess, Main Street, where you have the um, the Meredith plant and all that over there, and you proposing for various housings, option, walking, greens. I, I, I'm just looking futuristic in terms of how that would fit in on that Lawrence Street corridor, based on how it has been so heavily industrialized and that, and the Creosote field has been there for years, that they've been trying to get that property so we could use it. So I'm just, I don't, I don't know, I don't know, I, that's, I don't know. I mean, that's really aggressive, that's, and I'm not against it, I'm just saying it's really aggressive. Because that area has been so industrialized for so long. Um, but change is coming, right? So, good, I'm good.
And I did wanna just point out that these, the current uses that are on the screen that's highlighted, those are already outlined in the city's comprehensive plan, those just what we're adding. So like, the typical zoning districts has C R and M I X with, and C L, some of the commercials. Um, which the C R and M I X already allow for the residential, and then the use and scale is residential. So the M X C I, one, you know, coming in, it'll, you know, we've been talking about breaking up that industrial property, that's kind of the purpose of the M X C I, to encourage kind of more innovative land uses, other than just so much um, heavy impacting industrial.
And the, my only, my only concern is the environmental issue there.
Mm-hmm.
That has been there for years with that Creosote plant and that field that they planted on trees. Or when I don't know how many years ago, that was supposed to be uh, taking the Creosote out of the soil. And we have been able to utilize that. I mean, I don't know if you guys are planning for brown brick, oh, well, that's, that's a council discussion, I'm gonna leave that right there, but it did. I'm sorry, but I just, in terms of where it is, long-term, that's very aggressive and uh, and the change is coming. I'm just gonna say, at least it's, you're putting it in place so that if, if all things being equal, then it can be utilized for those purposes. I'd like to see that happen during my lifetime and Sean's lifetime. I'd like to see that happen.
Definitely. Well, Commissioner Fan, also, it was, I think that this would be a step in that direction. And what it reminds me of is when I was at the Atlanta City Council and we were going through the process of creating a tax allocation district for what is now Atlantic Station. That was a brown field.
Right.
And so in order for that to be developed, then all of that soil had to be remediated and all of those things to create that sort of commercial node, which is what it is today. So this would be a step in that direction.
That's what I didn't wanna talk about, that's the council, to see what they're gonna do with the brown, you know, ratchet up. But that, but that, but I'm, I'm liking what I'm seeing, and thank you, Tony, you and Kim for moving in that direction. Thank you so very much.
Thank you.
Any other comments, questions or concerns? All right, um, the motion is made by Commissioner Tucker Todd, seconded by Commissioner Love, that this body recommends approval. All in favor, sound aye?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed, sound nay. Hearing none, the ayes have it, motion carries. Our next agenda item is two zero one nine, M is in Mary dash zero zero six dash zero eight. Staff, would you please sound this agenda item?
Yes, Chairman, in reference to item number thirteen, twenty nineteen M dash zero zero six dash zero eight, city of East Point. Citywide, the applicant seeks a text amendment to amend Part Ten Zoning Code and Development Regulations, Chapter Two, Article A, Definitions and Article C of the Zoning Text District Classification and Boundaries to Establish Provisions for Short-Term Rentals, Whole House Lodging. It is a form of a text amendment in reference to case number twenty nineteen M zero zero six dash zero eight.
Okay, I believe that we've had a public hearing on this, am I correct?
Yes and no.
Okay, so maybe we need to go ahead and open a public hearing to make sure that we're saying. So Commissioners, at this time, I entertain a motion to open a public hearing for two zero one nine, M is in Mary, dash zero zero six, dash zero eight.
So my
Is there a second? It's been moved by Commissioner Tucker Todd, seconded by Commissioner Fan, that we open the public hearing. All in favor, sound aye?
Aye.
All opposed, sound nay. Hearing none, the ayes have it, the public hearing is now open. Are there any proponents here to speak in favor? Staff, would you, uh, the city is the applicant, would you go ahead and present the case?
Yes, in reference to case number twenty nineteen M dash zero zero six dash zero eight for whole house. The request is for short-term rentals, the applicant is requesting a text amendment to establish for regulations, permitted uses and short-term rentals, to provide for a minute, permitted uses and allowable zoning districts and definitions. In reference to the first um, item, it's, we're talking about a whole house. Can you go to the next slide, please, Tony? Thank you. Um, holistically, for both items, what we're specifically talking about, um, whole house at this junction, the purpose and intent is to reduce noise, parking, traffic and trash problems. To eliminate party houses, public utility and service burdens, to reduce short-term rentals' commercial effect on neighborhood characters and single-family communities, to improve permit and tax compliance, to increase tax revenue, to ensure a level of playing field between traditional lodging providers and unlawful short-term rentals, to reduce tension between short term rental property owners and their neighbors, to improve cities' responsiveness to city complaints, to provide for property maintenance and accountability and longevity. We are to, we are providing for definitions for whole house, um, which is in reference to twenty nineteen M dash zero zero six dash zero eight, dwelling units, home stay, short term lodging and principal residential use as well as short term rental. And I'll go ahead and, and throw in home stay because these ordinances are very closely tied together. Those are the new definitions that we are proposing in reference to this ordinance.
Okay.
In reference to the whole house, short term rentals, owning districts and permitted uses, um allowable zoning districts and definitions, uh, whole house lodging is defined as a business engaged in rental of an entire dwelling unit that provides lodging for pay for maximum continuous period of twenty nine days. That does not include serving food, whole house lodging uses, uses are exempt from the definition of family. And um, the whole house short term uh rentals, um, these uses here that you see are the allowable or permissible zoning districts that we're proposing, which is R one A, urban residential, R two, two family dwelling, R three, multi-family development, and R four, multi-family development, RT, residential townhouse, and CR, commercial redevelopment. And that is the um end of our presentation for the whole house.
Right, are there any other proponents to speak in favor of this zoning matter? Any other proponents to speak in favor? Are there any opponents to speak against the zoning matter? Any opponents to speak against? Hearing none and seeing none, uh commissioners, at this time I entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
Second.
It's been moved by Commissioner Tucker Todd, second by Commissioner Fan, that we close the public hearing, all in favor, sound aye.
Aye.
All opposed, sound nay. Hearing none, the eyes have it, the public hearing is now closed. Staff, would you please sound your recommendation?
Yes, in reference to case number twenty nineteen M zero zero six dash zero eight, city of East Point, the applicant seeks to amend tax amendment. The applicant seeks to, takes, seeks a tax amendment to amend part ten zoning district and development regulations, chapter two, article A, definitions and article C of the zoning district text, district classification and boundaries to establish provisions for short term rental, whole house lodging, staff recommends approval.
Okay, commissioners, you've heard the presentation from the applicant, which is the city of East Point. You've heard stack, staff's recommendation, which is to approve. At this time, I entertain a motion. Let us not all speak at once, please.
I move that we accept staff's recommendation to approve.
Is there a second? Okay, that motion dies for lack of a second. Are there any other motions? Commissioners, we will need to dispose of this agenda item.
Mr. Chair, I'll, I'll, I'll make a second on that.
Okay, so the, the motion is to recommend approval made by Commissioner Lovett. The second is made by Commissioner Tucker Todd, correct?
Correct.
Okay, any comments, questions, or concerns?
I have one.
Okay, Commissioner Fan?
I have just a couple, and, and uh, the, the twenty nine days. Um, who will be the enforcer of that ordinance to make sure that no one is providing, I noted, you know, after twenty one day, they're legal, twenty nine day, they're legal residence to that property. But how do we deal with that in terms of people staying beyond twenty nine days? And then people calling us and telling about, they need the police to go get them put out, you know, and those kinds of thing. Where, where are we in, in terms of enforcement? And maybe that's not a question that asks, this jumps, but I'm asking.
Um, in reference to enforcement, the city has engaged in a RFP process in order to solicit companies, uh, a third party company um to cover enforcement uh issues as well as mobile registration, ad- address identification, compliance monitoring, rental activity monitoring, tax collection, and dedicated code compliance hotline. And we um had, we sent this bid out. It was posted on October third, and we are now in the process of getting a committee together. I do believe that we had several um companies that qualified for the bid and submitted bids. And we're going to actually be meeting to look over those RFPs. So um, we're on a, we're on a road to, to having a third party um uh provider in order to provide for enforcement.
Anybody on this, anybody on this commission is gonna be a part of that process?
The third party.
And looking at the third party, is there gonna be anybody on this commission that could be a part of that to look at, with the third party vendor that you're looking at for compliance?
The, the current uh committee is um comprised of uh uh staff from the police department, um code enforcement, um, the finance department, uh, our planning department, and um the city manager's office.
Mr. Chair, I do have a question.
Yes, Commissioner.
They, it has to do with um uh the pay structure. How is this third party going to be paid?
I don't have the, the answer to that question at this time.
The reason I'm asking the question is, is the city going to incur an expense to make all of this, to put this in place?
The intent is for the, the um process to pay for itself. But again, I don't, I don't have a, I don't, I don't have a solid rest answer to that. Because it, we, we don't have that third party person in place at this time.
Mr. Chair, is that a consideration for the motion?
Well, it sounds like what I'm really hearing is that those things would be probably established by the city manager's office. And uh what this particular piece of legislation does is to create um provisions for this activity. But I think that as it relates to who's going to do that, I think that those things would probably be established by the city managers. That is only my assumption, Commissioner Lovett. Ms. Smith might have better information.
That's correct. The, the, the city manager's office, um, the, the business license component, um, which has already been approved by mayor and council. Um, there is going to be administrative guidelines where they have to submit for a business license every year. And so there are certain components and processes and procedures that um the applicants will have to go through in order to, to be allowed to, to have a short term rental in the city. Um, as far as how the financing stacks up and how we receive it, um, I'm just, I'm, I'm not, I don't have that information at this time.
One last question. Now, what is the, the uh frequency of a short term rental? Can I do back to back months, or is there a break in between?
Those type of provisions have not been placed in, in coordinates.
Thank you.
That was my follow up question, but thank you for asking it. Uh, but I, I will say this, uh, but, but, and this will be my last statement on this. It, it appears to me that the city has already moved forward to do this. And we are just giving our staff approval to what they've already decided they were going to do because uh they've already put out RFP for people to provide services and to deal with it as much as we approve it, uh, once we make the recommendation. So that, that's, that's how I see it. But my vote is gonna be what it'd be when it's time to vote, thank you.
Mr. Chairman? Yes, Commissioner Brian?
My problem with the short term loan, we've had a problem in the MAC community with the short term loan. Though these pe- people come in and they make trickery at these short term loans. And they have, they have ceremonies and have cars parked, and we can't even get into have a home because all the cars be parked on all sides of the street. And we've called the police on several times. I've even met with the police chief. I've met with the uh city manager as the president of the Metallurg Home Owners Association. And those are the things that I'm concerned about because uh, these people say they're moving in. It may be short term running, next thing we know, they having people two and three o'clock in the morning walking down the street uh with chicken heads cut off and seeing they getting baptized, these kind of things. And we've had this in our community, and I'm just concerned about that.
Okay, thank you. Any other comments, questions, or concerns?
Yes, um, Commissioner Fields? Um, I was thinking about this as well. As far as the enforcement component is concerned, uh, that's one. Uh, um, just speaking on that alone, I believe that when you go out and get a third party to do all the things necessary uh to enforce a, a particular ordinance like this. And then at the same time, rely on those people who actually want to do this to come to the city and register their apartments, their, you know, their houses and stuff, you know, to actually get involved in this. Um, having to do with outside people to do this, if the city's not gonna do it because it's too big a job. Uh, to me, that speaks to the fact that an outside uh agency, they're gonna have people in place to do certain types of things. And they're gonna want to be paid for these things. Um, I had asked that one time at the uh, at the um city manager's budget meeting. It's, he had a public meeting there. And I asked him specifically about this particular issue. And um, he said that that the um, the money that they charge is gonna pay for itself, that they charge a, a certain percentage of whatever business that's gonna come through. Um, of course, I asked him, well, you know, people don't rent all the time, you know, it's not like a steady stream of things happening. You know, suppose there's only like maybe five or six rentals, you know, on a weekend or something like that. They're gonna accept payment just for that? Um, but, but of course, he said yes, but the thing is, it is, it doesn't make sense. And it's, it's not logical uh that you're gonna get an agency to come in and assume a responsibility based on a commission status. Uh, I believe that they're gonna have some sort of required level of uh income uh in this endeavor in order to make it worthwhile to them. And I believe that uh going forward, that the city's gonna have to dump into, jump, dig into their coffers in order to uh to make this thing work uh in, in, in the short run at least. Um, so that, that's one objection that I have about the plan. Okay. That's, that's the major one.
Thank you, Commissioner Fields. Any other comments, questions, or concerns? Kim, can you please go back um to, when I read the caption? Um, the caption reads um, to establish provisions for short term rentals, whole house lodging. But I, I know that you did, you said to provide, on the very first slide, to provide definitions, home stays, whole house, dwelling unit, home stay, short term lodging, principal residence, short term lodging. Do we have all of those definitions?
Those are new definitions that we're adding to each of those zoning districts that, um, well, actually, we're adding it to the zoning uh definitions section of the zoning ordinance.
Right, and then on the next slide, you do have a definition of whole house lodging.
Yes.
Okay, but that was just one of the categories from the first slide. Where are the other definitions?
So um, those definitions, we didn't specifically um put them on the slide because we're taking these, the whole house in one part, and then we're gonna, the next item is actually for home stay. We're gonna take it in two separate um motions or actions. But we did not specifically put out all of the definitions on the slides that are gonna be in each one of those ordinances.
So we're really only looking at a definition of a whole house under this particular piece of legislation, this tax amendment, correct?
All, all definitions, all of those definitions listed are in the whole house ordinance. And that same list of definitions are included in the next item under home stay. If you would like to see definitions of those, those proposed definitions will be, we can pull it up in our ordinance if you'd like to see it. But we didn't spell it out because we're specifically talking about whole house on this one, and then we'll be talking about home stay on the next one.
Okay. All right, so just going back to read this, so we're just, we're talking broadly, short term rentals, specifically whole house lodging, only for this legislation.
Correct.
The caption isn't, it wasn't clear to me.
Yeah.
Okay, all right. Um, Commissioner, there's a motion made by Commissioner Lovett, second by Commissioner Tucker Todd, that this body recommends approval. All in favor, sound aye.
Aye.
All opposed, sound nay.
Nay.
Okay, um, roll call, it sounds like um the nays have it, but I just want to make sure. Commissioner Miller?
Nay.
Commissioner Miller?
Nay.
Commissioner Tucker?
No.
Commissioner Bill?
No.
Commissioner Fan?
No.
Commissioner McKnight? I couldn't hear them, sorry, Mr. McKnight.
Yeah.
Commissioner Lovett?
Yes.
Commissioner Brian?
No.
Commissioner Fields?
No.
The no's have it. Okay, thank you. Um, so so is there a, so the motion fails. So we still need to dispose of the, the item. So at this time, I entertain another motion, commissioners?
Motion to dispose of the item?
That'd be a motion to, to table, to file?
Deny.
What's the recommendation?
Uh, can I make the motion? I make the motion to deny, to deny the uh, the ordinance change.
The recommendation is to deny the ordinance change?
Correct.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Second.
It's been moved by Commissioner Fans, seconded by Commissioner Fields, that this body recommends denial of the ordinance change. All in favor, sound aye.
Aye.
All opposed, sound nay. Hearing none, eyes have it, the body would recommend to deny the ordinance change. Let's move to our next agenda, item two zero one nine, Emma's and Mary does zero zero six dash zero nine. Staff, would you please sound this agenda item?
Yes, Chairman, in reference to item number fourteen, twenty nineteen M zero zero six dash zero nine, city of East Point, citywide, the applicant seeks a tax amendment to amend part ten zoning code and development regulations, chapter two, article A, definitions, article C of the zoning text, district classification and boundaries to establish provisions for short term rentals, home stay. In reference to this item, twenty twenty nineteen M zero zero six dash zero nine, the home stay, short term rentals, only ordinance is permitted in the allowable zoning districts that you see here. Um, R one A, urban residential, R two, two family dwelling units, R three, multi-family development, R four, multi-family development, RT, residential townhouse, CR, commercial residential, CUP, community unit plan, EI, educational institution, MI, medical institution, AG, one, agricultural, R one, single family residential.
Can we sit there?
I am here. I'm sorry, can you go back to the list? And excuse me, R one, single family residential, and RL, residential limited. Um, home stay, home stay, short term lodging is defined as the business engaged in the rental of individual rooms within a dwelling unit that serves as a host, principal residence, including any single family and accessory apartment that provides lodging for pay for a maximum continuous period not to exceed twenty nine consecutive days that does not include serving food and to which the definition of family does not apply. That does not include serving food and to which the definition of family does not apply. That is the end of my presentation.
Thank you. Are there any proponents here to speak in favor, any other proponents here to speak in favor? Are there any opponents here to speak against, any opponents here to speak against? Hearing none, seeing none, commissioners, at this time, I entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
Go move.
Second.
It's been moved by Commissioner Field, second by Commissioner Bell, that we close the public hearing, all in favor, sound aye.
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 All opposed, sound nay, hearing none, the ayes have it, the public hearing is now closed, staff, would you please sound your recommendation?
Yes, in reference to twenty twenty, in reference to item number fourteen, twenty nineteen M zero zero six dash zero nine. See, East Point citywide, the applicant seeks a tax amendment. To amend part ten zoning district, zoning code and development regulations, chapter two, article A definitions and article C of the zoning. Text, district classifications and boundaries to establish provisions for short term rentals, home stay. Staff does recommend approval, this item.
Okay, commissioners, you've heard from the applicant, which is the city of East Point, you heard staff's recommendation, which is to approve, at this time, I entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion with denied the request.
Okay, Commissioner Fields, your motion needs to be in the form of recommendations. So is it that you recommend that this body denies the request to amend the text?
Yes.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Second.
It's been moved by Commissioner Field, seconded by Commissioner Miller, that this body denies the recommendation, recommends the denial to amend the text. For this agenda item. Any comments, questions or concerns?
Comment, Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Commissioner Fields?
This is closely related to the previous ordinance we just acted upon, requiring the same sort of registration and what have you. Also, I've been noticing in these presentations that the things that people would have to do in order to actually rent their house out. It's, it's like a lot of hoops they're gonna have to jump through in order to do it in the first place. So this, this kinda smacks me as a, a way to cause them to not want to do this. My, my question then is, should the, the, the text or the amendments, the recommendations from the city council? Should it be to dissuade people from renting out their houses? Rewrite a, a, an ordinance that would actually speak to that particular purpose? That, that's one of the questions I would, I would have for that. Because it doesn't seem to make in, any. Fiduciary. Sense in order to continue like this, we should just, you know, that, that's, that's, that's the way I see it.
All the questions, Mr. Chair.
Okay, Commissioner Fan has called the question. There's a motion on the floor made by Commissioner Fields, seconded by Commissioner Miller, that this body denies the, recommends denial to change the, the text. For this agenda item, all in favor, sound aye.
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 All opposed, sound nay?
Nay.
Okay, sounds like we have one nay, Commissioner Lovett. So the ayes have it, the motion carries, the body recommends to deny changing the text for this. We have come to the end of the cases that we were to hear today. I would like for, if the commissioner would reconsider number five. I would like to go back to the special use component of that in the W H I zoning district. So if there's a commissioner that would oblige me and move to reconsider number five, please.
Mr. Chair, I'm making motion that we move to reconsider item number five.
Item number five is two zero two zero M is in Mary does zero zero five dash one zero, is there a second?
Second.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved by Commissioner Miller, seconded by Commissioner Bell, that we reconsider number five. Commissioners, as I stated before, what I would like to do is to go back and add language here. That hopefully will capture the fact that we're requiring special use permits in our I one and I two zoning districts. But create a W I district where those uses are allowed without a special use permit. So I would like to ask Ms. Ross, Ms. Ross, are you there?
I'm here, I'm sorry, I'm having some technical difficulties with my laptop and I don't know how to fix it, so.
Okay.
Can you all hear me?
Yes.
Yes.
Ms. Ross, I was really trying to just get some language around the best way to, to word something that we may be able to add. To item five, which was the tax amendment to amend chapter two zoning regulations, article C zoning text, district classifications and boundaries. By adding section ten dash two zero eight one in order to establish a new zoning district, W H I warehouse industrial. In order to provide for committed warehouse and industrial uses and the location and regulation of warehouse and industrial uses. So I would like some language, if you could assist in that, that we just might be able to add to that as a part of a reconsideration. So that we could have a use permit requirement for those uses that also require a use permit in the I one and I two zoning districts. Would you be able to assist with that?
Yes, if the, if it is the will of the commission this evening, a motion, a maker of the motion can say something to the effect of. That the use permit requirements in I one and I two also have the same use permit requirements in W H I. So for those uses that require a use permit and I one and I two also have those same use permit requirements in W H I. And that would, you know, be a recommendation to mayor and city council to have it consistent, if that's the will of the commission this evening.
Thank you so much, Ms. Ross. Commissioner Miller, you're the maker of the motion. Would you accept Ms. Ross's verbiage as your own, as, as a part of this motion to reconsider, to add that to? Two zero two zero M is in Mary does zero zero five dash one zero?
Mr. Chair, the, the attorney says it way better than I ever could, so I accept whatever she's proposing here.
Okay, and Commissioner Bell, does your second still stand?
Yes, it still stands.
Okay, all right, thank you. So if, are there any comments, questions, concerns? Hearing none and seeing none, commissioners? Commissioner Miller has made a motion that we accept the verbiage as stated by our attorney, Ms. Ross. To add to this agenda item, two zero two zero M is in Mary does zero zero five dash one zero. That motion has been seconded by Commissioner Bell. The verbiage will be added to this text amendment and sent forward to mayor council for consideration. All in favor, sound aye.
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 All opposed, sound nay. Hearing none, the ayes have it. Thank you so very much for that. So now we're at the end of the agenda, are there any announcements that are for the good of the body?
Wear your mask.
I'm sorry?
Wear your mask and stay away from people and don't go to restaurants.
And bars.
I second that, okay, I second that, wear a mask.
And wash your hands.
Wash your hands, all right, any other announcements? Hearing none, I understand.
I'm complying, we're complying.
Say that again?
I'm complying, where am I, man?
Okay, at this time, commissioners, I entertain a motion to adjourn. It's been made by, the motion to adjourn has been made by Commissioner Lovett, seconded by Commissioner Fields, all in favor, sound aye. All opposed, sound nay, hearing none, the ayes have it, this special public meeting is adjourned, peace out, we sound down. Come.